Mr. Perez, if I can have you back on the dais? So we can start. Okay, I would like to call the regular meeting to order and announce that the Board did meet in closed session, and the Board appointed Ms. Carrie Underwood for Principal for Joseph Sims and Mr. Mark Vera for Principal Arnold Adriani. We'd also like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. Cards are available at the table just outside of the boardroom for anyone who wishes to address the Board. If you wish to address the Board, please complete a card and hand it to the staff member at the table to my right, and please be sure to complete the card indicating whether the matter you wish to address is on the agenda or not on the agenda. If the matter is on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when it comes time to address that item on the agenda, and we'll hold your card until then. First item, we have our Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Forcina will be presenting.
Yes, tonight, we're pleased to recognize Mrs. Cheryl Porter for her support of TR Smedberg Middle School, and we'd like to have Mrs. Porter and her sons and Mr. Wall come up. Okay, you can stand right there, right at the podium. Okay, Mrs. Porter has volunteered at her children's schools for many years and clearly understands the importance of being involved in her children's educational experiences. Her eldest son, Christopher, is a senior at Sheldon High School, participating in the Building Trades and Engineering Academy. Her younger son, Michael, is an eighth grader at TR Smedberg Middle School, where he is involved in the Smedberg Leadership Program. Michael's interested in participating in the Equitous Academy at Sheldon High School next year as a ninth grader. Mrs. Porter has volunteered and participated at schools in the Elk Grove Unified School District since moving to Elk Grove from San Diego in 2004. In the past, Mrs. Porter has helped students every week with various reading and comprehension programs at Butler Elementary. She also was a KCRA canned food drive facilitator for five years and a member of the PTO Board at Butler Elementary. Mrs. Porter has been a tremendous help to TR Smedberg by volunteering to help at our school dances, back-to-school nights, celebrating Smedberg, and various other leadership functions by distributing yearbooks at the end of the school year. Overall, Mrs. Porter has been one of TR Smedberg's biggest supporters. The Board of Education is proud to recognize Cheryl Porter's many contributions to TR Smedberg Middle School and to the Elk Grove Unified School District. And now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you again, Ms. Porter, for all that you do for our children. All right, at this time, we are on to item number four, high school student representatives. First up is Florin High School.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. My name is Kirsten Van, and I am this year's ASB President at Florin High School. One of Florin's main focuses is to always give back to our community and help those who are in need, so this year, we have decided to participate in a jeans drive called Teens for Jeans. Through this program, we hope to make a difference in our community by collecting over 10,000 jeans and donating them to the homeless youth of our community. We hope that we can provide these kids and teens with essential clothing items and spread warmth and kindness throughout our community. In addition to this, our school club, our school key club, has been doing a phenomenal job. They have tripled their service from the previous year. They are now over 1,800 hours compared to the 600 they dedicated last year. Our very own Michael Mendoza has been recognized as Division VII South's Member of the Month for the month of January. We are very proud of Michael for his dedication to service and commend our key clubbers' efforts to spread kindness and give back to the community. With our seniors completing their college applications, we wanted to share this excitement for college with the rest of the student body. Therefore, we were inspired to completely transform our student comments into a college-oriented environment, complete with insightful information about different college campuses, college decorations, including arrows pointing to the direction of college campus in relation to students' positions, and the students' favorite collage composed of Florin High School students and their dream colleges. The students were immediately drawn to and explored the new decorations. Throughout the remainder of the year, we will be updating the student comments with new and exciting materials. Recently, seniors attended the senior assembly to be informed of the details of graduation and to review the theme of this year's gala in March, which is a masquerade. Speaking of dances, our Masterpiece Dance Company has been working extremely hard these past two months to prepare for their main stage. These amazing dancers will be performing for two hours straight. I heard they're pretty dope, so why not watch them dance the night away and maybe even get down and boogie with them? Come watch them groove to the beat on February 7th at Consumed Us Oaks High School Performing Arts Center at 6:00 PM. You don't want to miss it. Another event we have coming up that we would like to invite you to is our Black Light Assembly. During this assembly, we will be recognizing students for their academic and athletic achievements. Like a masterpiece, our men's basketball team has always been doing great. They have improved their record from last year and even won the Elk Grove Cartwright Classic Basketball Tournament. We are so proud of our boys, and we are excited to see how they will end their season. Florin's women's basketball team is also doing great. They are currently ranked 20th in the Sacramento area. And as always, don't forget that you know, and I know, that every day is a great day to be a Panther.
Great report. We'd like to recognize the Principal of Florin, Mr. Don Ross, here with us. All right, next up, we have Monterey Trail.
Good evening, Board President Bobby Singh Allen, Superintendent Mr. Christopher Hoffman, and members of the Board. My name is Christina Lee, and I'm the ASB President at Monterey Trail High School.
And I am Kelsey Cole, ASB Vice President.
Our spring academic awards nights will be on Monday, March 9. A total of 527 students will be recognized this night for their 3.75 GPA or higher. In addition, 1,220 students were awarded for their 3.0 GPA or higher during Term Two through our Renaissance Program. MTHS is going through a WASD accreditation cycle this year. WASD is an ongoing six-year cycle where the school demonstrates the capacity to support high-quality student learning. WASD encourages development and improvement through an institutional self-evaluation. We are excited for our upcoming WASD visit, which is scheduled from March 1st to the 4th.
Monday, December 15th through Friday, December 19th, the Mustangs on our campus participated in Spirit Week by dressing up in holiday-themed outfits to kick off Artist's Season Winter Sports Rally. Each class represented a different season of the year, with the freshmen representing autumn, the sophomores representing winter, the juniors representing spring, and the seniors representing summer. On January 24th, the seniors will be presenting Winter Wonderland, a winter formal dance for all of the students to enjoy and a great opportunity to fundraise for the class of 2015. ASB is excited to receive leadership applications for the next upcoming school year. A candidate meeting for all those running for elected positions took place today after school, and from the 26th to the 30th, candidates will participate in Campaign Week. Elections will be held on February 2nd to the 3rd.
Our winter sports season has begun and has been off to a great start. Our men's basketball recently won first place in the Melgood Tournament and second place in both the Mark McRus Tournament and the Trojan Toss-Up Tournament. Varsity women's basketball are also going strong, winning their first game of the season against Sheldon on January 6th. Varsity wrestling has also been doing fantastic. They took fourth place in Atoma's High School's No Guts, No Glory Two-Day Tournament out of 56 schools total on December 22nd. On January 17th, the team had their first top 10 finish at the Trojan War Tournament at Oak Ridge High School and placed eighth. We had two finalists and one champion. EJ Via Cruzes made the finals, where he took second, and Israel Washington took first place and is the second Mustang to ever be named Outstanding Wrestler of a Tournament.
Students from our Design and Technology Academy competed in the Cyber Patriot, the National Youth Cyber Defense Competition, on December 5th through the 7th. Under the supervision of Coach Skid Brewer, the students demonstrated teamwork and critical thinking skills, and all three of our gold teams advanced to the regional round that was held on January 16th through the 18th. February 6th marks our annual multicultural assembly. This is a great way to celebrate all the talent and diversity we have to offer. All clubs on campus will have the chance to perform cultural dances and songs to their peers, with performances from our Latino Club, Asian Club, Polly Johanna, and more. We would be honored to invite all the Board and committee members to come check out the Mustangs in action on this day.
Our choir concert took place on December 16th with performances from our vocal ensemble, and our winter concert took place on December 17th with performances from jazz band, concert band, and symphonic band. On Friday, January 16th, the VAPA programs performed to the eighth graders of Edward Harris Middle School to encourage future participation in these activities. The Fourth Annual Winter Theater Fest is this Thursday and Friday, January 29th and 30th, in our Black Box Theater. Theater Fest is an annual theater performance consisting of a one-act play, a compilation of monologues, and many more.
We thank you for your time and support and hope that you will accept our invitations to attend all upcoming events at Monterey Trail High School. Christina and I will report back to you on April 8th.
Excellent. Another excellent report. We'd like to recognize Principal of Monterey Trail High School, Ms. Jenna Durham. All right, students, you may be dismissed. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the California Forestry Challenge Student and Teacher Recognition. Mr. Madison will be assisting, and Mr. Tony LaMogge will be assisting as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Singh Allen, President, members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Hein. The Board of Education is asked to recognize and congratulate students from Elk Grove High School for their participation in the 2014 California Forestry Challenge in Santa Cruz. The forestry team came in first place in the regional forestry challenge and fourth place statewide. The California Forestry Challenge, a competitive event for high school students in technical forestry and current forestry issues, has been in existence since 2003. At each event, students spend four days in the forest interacting with nature resource professionals. Using the forest as a classroom, the California Forestry Challenge is project-based learning at its best. The challenge includes field training and testing, a current topic field trip in which students conduct research and collect data, then complete a service project and a final presentation scored by a panel of three judges. This year, Elk Grove was one of 13 California high schools to participate in the challenge. Out of 250 possible points, Elk Grove received a grand total of 213.7, putting them in first place in the challenge and fourth place statewide. The Board is asked to recognize and commend coaches Tony White and Rebecca Anderson and the students from Elk Grove High School for their accomplishment at the California Forestry Challenge. If I could please call forward the two coaches to receive their certificates of recognition, Tony White and Rebecca Anderson. Now, each team member, as I call your names, please come forward and receive your certificate of recognition. Captain Katie Etchison. Team co-captain Rebecca Brazier. Team member Rachel Castillo. Team member Emma Collins. Team member Eric Connor. Team member Dana Mastrow. And team member Annabelle Saley. Not in attendance this evening to receive her word, but also team member Macy Hollabeck. I would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing secondary education to celebrate the success of the students, and I'd also like to take a brief moment to recognize the Principal from Elk Grove High School, who's also in attendance, Ms. Kathy Guy. Thank you.
Oh, that's funny. All right, how about another round of applause? Yeah, I'm gonna do it to you. Excellent job. Okay, student expulsion recommendations, we have none. LCAP update, none this evening, which brings us to budget update, the Governor's Budget Update, Mr. Fagan.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the Board, and Ms. Hein. I'm here this evening to make a presentation to the Board regarding the Governor's January Budget. This is a two-part presentation. Mr. Pierce will join me near the end to do a brief update on the Governor's Budget as pertains to financing of facilities, so it's kind of a two-part presentation tonight. So we're gonna talk a little bit about, you know, the themes of the Governor's Budget. We always talk about the U.S. and California economy, what's not in the budget, some interesting information on the cost of education, Prop 98, Prop 2, district reserves, local control funding formula, and the various components of the budgets. We'll talk about net steps, then I'll have Mr. Pierce come up and talk a little bit about Proposition 39 and the state school facilities as it relates to the Governor's proposal. If you will, this is my portion of it, it's good news, and Mr. Pierce's is a little less good news. So generally speaking, positive economic growth continues. I think we're all aware that the economy and the stock market, which drives our revenues in the state, is moving right along. We'll talk about new Prop 98 money and how, to some extent, there's no, the non-proposition 98 side of the budget is still pretty tight. If you'll recall, when we were going through the difficult times, we were, the school funding was taking more than its proportionate share of the cuts because of the minimum guarantee of Prop 98. So one of the things the Governor's done is, as funds are being restored, is to disproportionately give a lot, most of the new money to schools, but it kind of offsets what he did when we were losing funds. So he stays the course on the LCFF and the LCAP. He's made a firm commitment to adult education and California technical education, that's the, you know, the grant, the partnership academies that we have, the wall of debt. He finally pays down the final piece of the final debt, and overall, it's a good budget. And remember, this is the proposal, so we'll talk about it as just that, but we all know that the Governor, particularly when there is money, kind of gets his way. So there might be some modifications, but we wouldn't expect to see any significant changes coming out of the legislature. The U.S. economic outlook, everybody is aware of the stock market. Stock market's doing really well. It's been fluctuating a little bit, but we expect to see, you know, perhaps a dip here soon, and everybody, I think, knows about capital gains tax and how they drive revenues in the state, particularly as it relates to education funding. Low energy prices are certainly helping in the short term, and government spending is increasing. We've seen it this year and last year as far as education. The recession ended six years ago, but actually, it's now just coming into play. Prop 30 was a major portion of that, where we're starting to see new revenues come back. The California economy, same, riding the same economic trends. Unemployment's 7.1% statewide, but there's some really varied percentages depending on where you go. The Bay Area is much lower, the inland areas, particularly in the Southern California, not in the urban areas is significantly higher, so, but overall, job growth is positive. What's not in the state budget? There's no proposal for a statewide school facilities bond, although the Governor lays out tenants for a new funding framework, and I'm just gonna leave it at that and let Mr. Pierce talk a little bit more about that and the needs and how this really affects our schools. No new funding to address, you know, the increases to Calpers and Calsters, and I have a little slide later on that'll show you a little bit of how it's gonna affect the phase in of local control funding formula. No new funding for transportation, as we've talked about in the past. Funding for transportation was frozen in 1986, so in 1986, we probably had 10,000 kids and didn't transport nearly as many of them as we have to now, particularly with special education. So even a 50% funding level for our school is $2 or $3 million of new revenue. So that's something that Jill Galardo and her lobby group that she belongs to on the transportation side is constantly pushing to get something in there to get us, because we have districts that are half our size, 20% of our square miles that get twice or better funding than we do. So it's really, there's a real big inequity, but they just can't figure out how to fix it. Early childhood education, there's no expansion, and we're waiting to hear if there's any other details on that. So the cost of education. So I wanted to put this slide in to talk about, you know, we talk about being 47th-funded in the nation, and this one just kind of gives an idea of, the U.S. average funding per student is 11,735, and in those seven states, which are the higher-funded ones, 100% of their students. But when you look at California, 7.9% of our students are funded at the national average, and you're probably looking at our basic aid districts where it all comes from property taxes, so they get more than what the actual funding is. And in average, 43, so it's not just that we're low, but we're low across the whole state. So we're bolstered up, if you will, by just a very few small schools that add to that. So I think it's a little more visible or to understand when you get an idea of how bad California is when you compare to the national average, just funding per students. So here's what's in the budget. $4 billion for the LCFF gap closure, so the level of funding for this year, 2014, will be compared to the, we will recalculate our target amount, our seven-year target amount, and they will use $4 billion to close that gap. I'll talk a little bit more about the details on that in a minute. $1.1 billion for mandated cost buydown, that goes on a per-student basis. So we have a $40 million credit card from before the mandated cost block grant went into effect, which we currently participate in, and I want to say we're right around $3 million a year of real money, not, they owe us money somewhere down the road. And this is paid to all districts, so even if you didn't go through the process of submitting your claims, you still wind up getting these mandated cost dollars. For us, $1.1 billion is about $10 million, one-time money for next year. About $1 billion to eliminate the remaining deferrals. Mr. Perez, that was the question you had last time, billion dollars, so that's gone now. $500 million for an adult education block grant. We think that at the very least, that will backfill the $800,000 that's coming, been allocated from the general fund, the unrestricted general fund, as a block grant for this year, so we've included that revenue, and this will extend the adult education program to work with the community colleges for at least another year so that they can finish that work that they've been doing. The next one is Emergency Repair Program, $273 million. The ones in bold apply to us, the ones that are not in bold do not. So the 273 is facilities, I think it's associated with the Williams Act, and we don't qualify for that. The next is additional $250 million for one-time CTE incentive grants each of the next three years, so some more money for career technical education. We expect to participate in that, and because there's an indication if it's oversubscribed, because it's a grant application process, they'll give preference to schools that are already running the program. So we would hope that Ms. Hamilton and her, and Ms. Pennon and her staff will get involved with that. Additional ADA growth, we don't have any growth projected for next year, but if we do, there's funding for that in the Governor's Budget. They do that every year. Oh, that's for the current year, and then for next year, they've added $6.9 million, so that's part of our, as we do go through the year, we realize how many new kids we have, we recognize those dollars. But they have to budget it to make sure that they have money available. And then the $100 million for internet connectivity and infrastructure, that's not for us, that's targeted mostly for more rural areas that don't have a lot of infrastructure already, and so those are funding incentives to basically help them with Common Core and Smarter Balance Assessments. So Prop 2. So Prop 2 is the Prop 98 Reserve. It was passed last November, and what it does is it adds additional reserve monies when there's excess capital gains tax to put a rainy day fund for Prop 98 so that in the event we have downturns, there's funding set aside to help minimize the, any cuts that might be needed to be made due to the Prop 98 calculations for schools. It also has some restrictions on districts and how much fund balance they can have, and there's a slide that'll come up, we'll talk a little bit about where we think we might be, but that third bullet talks about, you know, the maintenance factor as of June 30th is fully repaid, and these are the, all of the tests for it. Prop 98 funding is based on test one, full funding for enrollment growth and COLA provided, and the maintenance factor is not being created. So those are the conditions that must be met for Prop 2 to kick in and start setting money out, and then they have to transfer the money into And then they have to transfer the money into the rainy day fund. So the trigger are, again, there's the four triggering mechanisms. School services, this is one of their slides, they think the conclusion is wrong, is that this is something that's going to happen going forward. In the past, I've talked about our district would, if we look at the past, probably wouldn't necessarily have a large effect on it, but simply the fact that it takes control away in a local control environment is something that we want to be concerned with, particularly if we need to, if we see bad times coming and we think we need to start, as we did in 2007, '08 before the '08, '09 recession hit, and started, you know, backtracking and putting money aside and making cuts ahead of it. What you do is by making those cuts early is to get your reserve up. And so this limitation in a quick downturn period could certainly have an effect on our district. So there's a kind of a statewide movement within school districts to talk about having this pulled removed, and so we're going to work. And school services also wanted to put in a slide that talked about those four factors that triggered. And so this year, the three, last three are met, and it's possible that the maintenance factor will be met, depending on, you know, the final funding numbers this year. But you can see how quickly and the possibilities and probabilities of how soon that might come into effect. And if that, for our district, that takes our 2% reserve and caps it at 4%, $22, $23 million, something like that, would be a maximum reserve if that, if that's triggered. So the local control funding formula, $4 billion for continued implementation. It closes the gap for the LCFF full implementation by 32.19%. It, when it combines with '13, '14, '14, '15, it's 58%. And if you think of seven-year implementation, we should probably be more in the high 30s, low 40s. And so we're, they're well ahead of the funding, of full funding for the LCFF, keeping in mind that it just adjusts us to a 2007, '08 adjusted-for-inflation level. And it, it's about 8.7%, $675 per ADA on average, which for our district is about 550, because districts with higher targeted students are going to get a bigger chunk of that money. A good example is, as you'll see in a few slides later, the new revenue is about $33 million for our district. And the revenue limit, $4 billion new dollars, would have been about $40 million. So just this one year, the change, the increase is about $7 million lower under the LCFF than it would have been in prior years. So here's the, speaking of multi-year projections, this is the one that we brought to the board at the first interim in December. And the major changes in this are that we've changed the 2015, '16, and 2016, '17, no, we haven't changed the 2016, '17, they didn't give us any new numbers. So the 2015 estimated new revenue was right at $15 million in December, and it's almost $33 million now. We've also made an adjustment in the contingency mandated 2% reserve, assuming that at some point, we'll spend those new additional dollars, and it'll have a requirement to put revenue, the 2% aside. So we've set that money aside because we don't want to overstate the amount that's available for district priorities. So that's the primary changes between the two. There's some small changes in transport, and some contributions and transfers. That's the $800,000 that we have adjusted, that we won't have to make the contribution for adult education, because we believe that new $500 million is going to provide a block grant for us to cover those, at least the amount that we've been contributing in the past. So you can see, this year's deficit is still $6.5 million, because the revenue he is proposing doesn't take effect till next year. But when we add in the new revenues, we see that the $1.3 million surplus is now 30.7. Keep in mind, $10 million of that is one-time dollars because of that mandated cost buydown. So the difference between the $15 million that we proposed, or that we recognized in December, and the 30, almost $33 million now, is the extra $17 million plus the $800,000 that we think we'll get from the adult ed program. So that's why you see the surplus kind of spikes in '15, '16, because it's $10 million of one-time money, and then it drops back down to about $19 million in 2016, '17. So what's included in this? It's got the new increase, LCFF increase for '15, '16, and '16, '17, still assumes flat enrollment, continued staffing levels except for '06. Current contract with EGA has it dropping to 20, 6 to 1 beginning next year. The healthcare contribution is our part of that guaranteed 3% cap, 80% for 2015, '16. And then just 10% is kind of the normal, the number we use as a placeholder for the out-years until we get new information. So 8% increase in healthcare for '16, '17. It increases the RRM contribution to 3% starting in 2015, '16. There was no, I think the MAC, the minimum was 1% up and through this year, but we had, because RRM, Routine Restricted Maintenance, is such an important part of our, maintenance of our facilities, that we were still spending right around 2.5% to continue the RRM program. So about a half a percent increase going into next year. The TK overload stipend was a one-time deal for this year, so we've removed that. And then you can see we've added $800,000, removed the contribution from the unrestricted general fund to adult education for what we believe will be backfilled by the block grant. So discretionary funds, this is the $1.1 million. The governor suggests that it used, to be used for further investments and implementation of the Common Core, but the reality is, it's payments to us for mandated costs that we've incurred over, probably in our case, the last 20 years, that are required by statute to be paid, but no requirement that they pay them every year. So they have, traditionally, when they didn't have money, they would just put $1,000 aside for each one and then not pay any of them. The new, going forward, the governor is kind of paying us about 50%, in our district's case, about 50 cents on the dollar, but he's paying the dollars to us each year. So our claims were $4 to $5 million, and now they're more like $3, so a little more than 50%, which, when you look at it, it's probably not a bad deal, because someday they'll just probably figure out a way to get rid of those, especially the old ones in the past. But you get that money regardless. And then he also talks about using it for English language development and those types of things. But the reality is, he's paying us on an old debt, but he's trying to, he's going to come back one of these days and tell us that, "I gave you money for Common Core and for these English language arts piece." So to some extent, he's trying to use the money twice to settle an old debt and then try to recommend that we do it. So he's kind of talking a little bit out of both sides of his mouth. So this, we don't normally put cartoons in it, but we thought this one was particularly relevant in the fact that he's trying to kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. So here's adult education, $500 million block grant. Doesn't include any, previously funded, is required as part of the meeting sub-effort. It's a, it's a brand-new block grant, and we think that about $300 million of it's going to cover existing costs, such as our $800,000. And then the 200 is going to be, about 200 million of it's going to go to augment these new plans and implement these new plans with the coalition or the cooperation and collaboration with the community colleges. So it's not real, we don't have a lot of details on that yet, but that's just the real rough numbers. But we're as confident as we can be until we get more detailed regs on the, at the first part of February. Bob Blatner, we talked to him last week, and that was when he thought we'd get some more detail on this. So we've included in the budget. The 250, career technical education, we didn't include this in the budget, but as we go forward, I'm sure that we'll be participating in the, in the grant process, and it's continuing of the Career Pathways Trust grant. So we'll just have to see how this, we don't have a lot of details on this, other than there's some money out there for us to work, to apply for, to implement, expand, and accelerate our CTE programs. Special education, all they do every year is give us the COLA, which is 1.58%, $8.33, doesn't begin to cover what our costs of special ed are, particularly the fact that a lot of our new kids are not of school age, and so we get no funding at all on them. But this is something that they go through every year. And no other major changes, other than they've, we expect to hear a report from a task force that he started a couple of years ago, and some recommendations. I haven't heard anything earth-shattering to be expected from that task force, but we'll have to just wait and see. Portionment deferrals, last year, he had planned on paying them all down last year, and then as a part of the May revise, came back and pulled a billion back so that he could give, close the gap on school districts, LCFF. I think it was, in our case, it was about the same amount as this year's increase for the Pers and Sturs contributions that he also brought back in. So it was kind of a, here's a $2 million bill, and here's $2 million to cover it for one year, because it starts compounding going forward. So now he's going back and the money's there, and if he doesn't extinguish it in 14, '15, he sure has a plan for it, to use one-time dollars next year to get rid of those deferrals. And there's some statistics on how big it got and how long it's been there. So I think this is talking about the Cal Pers and Cal Sturs. I just brought this because we've talked about the fact that our district at, in the year seven, will go with other districts up to the new rates, 19.1 for Sturs, and I believe the Pers is in the low 20s. I didn't, it's the smaller of the two. And it's $33 million of additional contributions that will be added to the district's costs going forward, and it's a valid cost. They've, you know, Pers and Sturs people have worked for their pension and their benefits all their lives. It's a 40-year problem, they're fixing it in seven years, that's the, that's the way I look at it. So I think they could have been a little bit more proactive in doing that. But this is the effect on the new purchasing power on the LCAP, LCFF implementation, where the state would have paid $18.5 billion when you adjust for the anticipated additional costs to districts for the Cal Sturs and the Cal Pers. We lose about $4 billion in buying power. And so that's, that's very telling numbers. And so there's been some discussions, though not met favorably by the governor, to talk, to talk about moving these outside of the LCFF, having funded separately, so that the LCFF funding is truly dollars that could be used for the targeted students and for base programs. So something that wasn't anticipated when the LCFF was originally formed. So managing volatile projections, if you'll recall, we started this year with a gap closure estimate of 30%, and then we came back because after, after the governor adopted the budget sometime in July, Department of Finance said, "Oh, by the way, '15, '16 gap closure is now 20%." And so it dropped from $22 million down to $15 million. Well, now he comes out and he really puts it out there, shows you where the governor's going from a conservative nature, and it's even higher than the original one. So not sure if this is more of, the governor tends to like poke us in the eye and then give us an ice bag to put on it. So it's kind of the same thing he did when he, when he hit us with the Sturs, Pers a year early, but then gave us, you know, the money to cover it for one year. So that's kind of in his MO with us in certain areas. And so it's, I want you to recall that the decrease in the DOF projected gap is to be conservative. So we think we take a pretty conservative approach to it, but it would be nice as, at least as, as they make changes to the budget, they'd make and announce changes to the gap closure, so we could adjust the multi-year projection once, and not like we had to do. We did a 45, we did the adopted, but then we came back on the 45-day and dropped the rates. So it'd be nice if they coordinated those. Don't want the board to forget that Prop 30 has no proposed renewal, that is in the works that I'm aware of, and that as we develop the '15, '16 budget, that'll be the last year, full year of Prop 98, and we'll expect it to start going away. And I think we only get a half a year in '18, '19 of the income tax, which is the larger portion of the sales tax. So the sales tax drops off after '16, '17, and then I think halfway through '16, '17, and then by the end of 2018, it's all gone. And so hopefully, to avoid any problems, the economy grows up under it, that's the best hope we can have, unless there's some discussion of extending Prop 98. And I think 2018, isn't that the year the governor released? Yeah, I think so. So the next steps is second interim financial report. We'll bring that to you, I think, at the first meeting in March. We'll have the governor's May revise in May, and we'll adopt the budget in concert with the LCAP in June. And this is normally where I would stop and ask for questions, but I'm going to have Mr. Pierce come up and do his presentation, and then we can both answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. So those of you that know me know that I'm a positive, upbeat, optimistic gentleman, and that I love what I do. So I'm going to keep my optimism, but the upbeat and the positive will go a little bit by the wayside. So I know that we're all very excited about what the governor's done with regard to our operational revenue moving forward. But I think it's very telling in the fact that I'm presenting tonight alongside Mr. Fagan, because the governor did release his ideas, not a plan, but his ideas relative to a statewide school facility program. I think Rich made a kind of a cute comment about 2018 being when the governor's term is up. And quite frankly, I think this is something that he's trying to push off. If we've learned one thing with the governor, when he has an idea and he says something, he wants to see it come to fruition. And he has made it clear from day one that he wants to get the state out of the business of financing school facilities, and that he sees school facilities as an impediment to the state's wall of debt, or at least reducing that wall of debt. So myself, a number of other practitioners, coalitions have been working very closely with the administration, the Department of Finance, the State Allocation Board has had a subcommittee just on this. You also know Joan Buchanan had a bill that flew through the Assembly, flew through every committee, unanimous yes votes, not a, not a single no vote. And the governor kept that bill from going forward, and that bill would have placed a school bond on the 2014 ballot. So that was stalled. The intent and the hope for all of us was that all of that work, effort, dialogue, ideas would have come to fruition with the governor's budget proposal, and he kind of alluded to that. So we were hopeful that he was going to release something that would give us some hope. And he really could have been a hero on a number of fronts, not just operationally, but with regard to school facilities. So to put it in perspective for the board, the reason I'm here tonight is because this is a very, very significant matter for a district like ours, also for the community. They need to be aware of this. But so too, the state has always been in the business of funding school facilities, at least from a 50% threshold, since Prop 13. So really, since the early '80s, the state has been funding about 50% of all public school construction when it comes to facilities. So unfortunately, the governor's budget release didn't have any real solution, it didn't have a plan, it just had a number of concerns. And so I really am left with just sharing those concerns with you. So this has become a trend, that first bullet, in public education. We have really been pitted against ourselves. So as you well know, as a board, all of our interests are now competing with each other. And he's trying to roll that into the facilities. So you can see in that, and these are all verbatim, this is right from his budget. So he's seeing facilities outside of other educational costs and priorities, and he wants to make us and you compete those interests with regard to facilities as well. So what's happening in the classroom would be competing with what we do on a facilities program. He feels that the program uses outdated and inconsistent enrollment projections. It's very relevant to our district, because that's how we project growth, and therefore eligibility and our need. By the way, I don't concur with that statement. The enrollment projections are good ones, and they should continue moving forward. The third bullet is significant for our district, because he's saying districts need to just absorb future growth within traditional and non-traditional means. So he's talking about utilizing excess capacity throughout your district, not just boundary changes, but transportation. So just, you know, literally transporting students from areas that don't have room to areas within the district that do have room on a significant level. Obviously, we don't have enough money for transportation today as it is, and that would add to the problem. And then just lock and step with the first bullet again, he's frustrated with the fact that school facilities are being funded outside of our Prop 98 guarantee. In fact, in my conversations with the Department of Finance, they asked me and some other district-level practitioners, "Do you ever see a day when school facilities will be funded under your Prop 98 guarantee?" And of course, we said no, and they were dismayed by that and just couldn't get their minds around that situation. around that situation. So again, he really feels like the state bond debt is out of control and it's taking too much of the general fund. And when I say that, I mean all bond debt in the state, whether it be prisons or water or the bullet train that's coming up and other expenses. And he says that school bonds are a significant part of that wall of debt. What I want to share with the board and with other members in the room, the school bond debt in terms of the state's overall debt is only 2% of the state's overall debt. So we are not the problem. In fact, it's continuing to decline. Last year in the governor's budget, he showed a graph that showed the wall of debt and it was escalating. He didn't show that graph this year because it's starting to decline and after 2018, 19, it really turns into a cliff and the debt starts to expire at a rapid rate. So that argument is starting to go away and again, schools just are not the cause of that problem. The program serves districts on a first come, first served basis. Again, this is the governor's words, not mine. He has a big problem with that. I want to share with the board, it's not a first come, first served basis, it's a needs-based program. So you, you have eligibility based on a need, then you can apply to pull from that eligibility and because the resources are so limited, they're taking liberties with that and saying the first to come in and submit based on their eligibility are being funded. That's true, but it's again, needs-based first and then if you submit, you get funded if you have eligibility. In terms of the complexities, his general statement is the program's far too complex. It clearly is an advantage for districts that are large and have facility staff. I would argue that the program is complex for a reason. There's nothing more important than the safety of children and really a lot of the red tape, if you will, involved in the program is because of the safety component and all the levels that we have to go through in terms of approvals in order to house students. If you've ever done a remodel at your house and had to deal with the city planning department, you also know that, that too is complex. So lastly, in terms of concerns, he feels that the definitions of facilities are far too standardized and they don't allow local flexibility. And really what he's getting at there into the second bullet is this, this concept that we have of 21st century learning opportunities for students. That, I could disagree with it, but it's a simple change. The California Department of Education in this process approves your plans for educational adequacy. So all that really has to happen is a legislative vehicle that would mandate to the Department of Ed and expand its horizon of what we call a classroom. And that, that would be a simple fix there that they could work towards not hitting pause on the entire statewide program while we have eligibility needs throughout our district and many more. So now they're also utilizing the argument that Prop 39, which was passed in 2000, that was the initiative that allowed districts to pass a bond with a 55% approval rating as opposed to the supermajority that was in place for years. And that was a vehicle because districts were failing bond measure after bond measure after bond measure and couldn't even gain 50% of funding from the state as they had no local match. So that's, they're using that against us in this argument. So now you have Prop 39, just go pass more bonds and you don't have to come to the state because we've given you that vehicle. And then they also use the bond success as a result of Prop 39. They do pass it an 80% approval rating, thus he wants us to go out and pass more bonds and not rely on the state for funding. And then of course, the local control funding formula, the current program was approved in 1998, it was pre-LCF and he feels therefore it's out of date and we should update it. So these are the proposals, that's my word, to address the concerns, but this is really all we were left with after he identified all of his concerns and, and basically provided nothing in terms of funding. So he wants to increase the tools for local control. Again, that's kind of the LCFF motto. We don't really know what that means, but he did provide some opportunities. So expanding local funding capacity. So increase the overall bond debt caps of school districts. So there's a limit to how much we can sell in the way of bonds relative to our overall assessed value. That's in statute, he's proposing to increase that. In other words, allow us to go farther into debt at a local level than we currently can legally. And then within Prop 39, there's tax amounts. So it's $60 per $100,000 of assessed value. He's looking at possibly increasing those tax amounts, which again, is just adding to the debt at the local level. Restructuring developer fees. Rich talked a little bit about the doublespeak. This too is a little bit of doublespeak. So he wants to create a single statewide fee. It would be somewhere between the level two fee and the level three fee. In layman's terms, the current level two fee pays 50% of the construction of new schools, the state pays the other 50%. When the state's out of money, the level three fee is triggered and the developer would pay the full freight of the school. They've suspended that, by the way, so level three doesn't exist any longer. But he's saying somewhere in between level two and level three and we'll make it a statewide fee. So just by definition, right there, it's not enough funding to build a school. And then he's also saying, and we'll allow you to negotiate that at a local level, that doesn't tie in to a statewide fee. So that's a little confusing in its own right. And then of course, Rich mentioned, this is well, expand the use of routine restricted maintenance to allow those funds for capital outlay projects. When routine restricted maintenance came into play, it was a minimum that school districts must contribute to maintenance of its schools if they're gonna receive funding for new school construction. So they wanted to see those schools maintained with taxpayer dollars being invested in the project. If you listen carefully and read the words, now they're treating the minimum as a maximum, which has an entirely different feel. So they act like it's a burden. So we're gonna reduce the amount that you have to contribute to RRM as opposed to make it a minimum. I see it as a minimum, it is a minimum, and now what he's saying is you can go ahead and take that money, leverage it, which means you're leveraging the general fund and issue bonds against that money to build new schools as opposed to maintaining the schools that you currently have. So take advantage of local bond success, again, that goes into the Prop 39 success. Use that to pass more bonds locally. And then again, we're back to utilizing Prop 98 monies for capital outlay projects. He wants us to take those monies out of the classroom and apply them to future school projects. The last bullet, he, he ended the proposal simply saying, I want to advance the dialogue of future school facilities. We thought that's what we had been doing for the last two years and we were hoping to see a solution here. I would tell you that I believe his budget itself has advanced the dialogue. You may have read, there's an initiative, a ballot initiative that's put forth by Californians for Quality Schools. That's a coalition of cash, Coalition for Adequate School Housing and the Building Industry Association. Those two usually don't see eye to eye and now they've come together to get a ballot measure put on the ballot in 2016. So that's a very good thing. On the heels of that press release and the polling that was associated with it, you now see the Senate Education Committee Chair has released a bond bill. It's very vague, that's Senator Lou, and then also the Assembly Majority Leader has released a statewide bond bill. It's very vague, but at least it's now opening the dialogue. So this is the statement that I think that, that we should walk away understanding and this, this is a quote directly out of the governor's budget proposal with regard to facilities. So there's really no solution put forth, but he says, "School districts and developers should have a clear understanding of which limited circumstances will qualify for state assistance." So he's making it very clear, don't expect to get any funding for facilities moving forward. Rich talked a little bit about deferred maintenance, I'll just say this quickly, it's gone. So the deferred maintenance program has completely gone away from the state level, but now they're talking about it again because they want us to consider it moving forward with regard to funding facilities. Routine restricted maintenance, I've spoken about that already, Rich spoke about it as well, but we're forced to fund it at a minimum of 3% starting next year. And then Rich talked about these as well, so I'll just say these quickly. The emergency repair program, this was a settlement with regard to Williams. This will meet the state's obligation under the terms of that settlement. We don't qualify for that funding, so we're a little bit invisible in that regard. SB 854 is a significant matter with regard to contractor pre-qualification moving forward that we'll have to comply with. Prop 39, another interesting piece, this is not the previous Prop 39, but the one that passed in 2012 for energy retrofits. The amount for 15, 16 is actually declining by about 20% from what was contributed in 14, 15. However, the tax increases as a result of the loophole that was fixed increased by 20%. So we're hoping by May that that number will actually increase in the May revise. And then as Rich mentioned, the technical infrastructure grant program with regard to internet is something that we won't qualify for, so we're kind of invisible in that regard as well. So with that, Rich and I are here for any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Thank you for those presentations. I will open it up to board for questions and comments and I'll start to my left. Any colleagues here have questions or comments?
I would just like to thank you again for the thorough report. Just in your opinion, I was just wondering, what do you see the projected rate to be for the reserves that's needed to help kind of plan ahead of time in the upcoming years? That percentage rate that would be needed to help for save money in the years ahead?
For Prop, when Prop 30 goes away along, along those lines?
Yes.
Well, I can tell you it's more than 4%. If it's even close to, if the economy hasn't built up enough under it, I think the reality is each district needs to have that flexibility to do it themselves. I would hope that in times, as, as they did in the very difficult times, that even if Prop 2 continues, that they are conscious enough that when we see bad times coming, that they, they remove the restrictions on that to allow us to build it and them to build Prop 2 reserve as well. Because the Prop 2 reserve isn't gonna be enough to, if we have anything, even half of what we had the last time. So I think we need to be able to have a little bit of our own destiny. So it's hard to say a number, but I think we need to be able to, as soon as we know what's coming and see it coming, that we can make some adjustments.
Anyone else question or comment?
Page 29, advance the dialogue of the future school facilities. What's, what's your recommendations, both of you, and what's the recommendations of the LAO's office and legislative body that you've been hearing, both Senate and Assembly?
And I think I shared with the board, we were actually invited, I and my staff, to meet with the Ledge Analyst Office about this. We spent a full day with them. So unfortunately, the outcome was just what I presented tonight. The information really didn't come together in a meaningful way, other than we just need to continue to explore and they're pushing a pause button on the program. So to be completely candid, I, I think that the notion of, I just want to advance the dialogue is just to continue to have the pause button hit. Now, our district's growing. You know, we have two schools that I would love to, to start construction this spring. Absent state funding, you're down to one of those two. So that's, that's, therein lies the problem and that's gonna continue as we move forward and growth continues. So I don't know what they mean by that, other than we'll just continue to talk about it as if the problem doesn't actually exist. So the Ledge Analyst Office, we had a great conversation with them. We were hopeful that it would go somewhere and that they, they had inferred that they were gonna do a report and a recommendation. That was never brought forward. The Department of Finance is, is who seems to be controlling, of course, the purse strings, but also the, the issue with the governor's office. And so, you know, these were the exact words as one of our meetings ended. The program, as you know it, is ceasing to exist, it will never be the same and the state is never going to fund school construction. Well, there's some Assembly members thankfully and some senators who disagree with that. The ballot initiative, which we are part of and we're members of cash and I serve that board and so we're excited about that. We're actually hoping that will force the dialogue. And there is, School Services released a study today and the LA Times, which I'll send that to the board, in a B.C., had a great article yesterday just about that and hopeful that that initiative will force the governor to come to the table and hopefully make something happen. The fee supports it, it tends to pass, I'll give them that.
Could we have the, that, that report regarding School Services so we could?
Sure, it's a summary of, of the proposed bond bills, but at the moment, they're very, very vague and they're just, they're just introductions so that they can hold a place in line, but we, I'll provide all of that information.
So I noticed that 80% of school bonds pass. Do you foresee our, our participation and working with our, our local developers to resolve this issue or what?
Yeah, I think so. And, and the 80% success rate is specific to Proposition 39, so those are those general obligation bonds passed under those rules as opposed to the simple majority or the supermajority, pardon me, or Melrose Districts. So what I will be bringing forward to the board is our master plan starting this spring. I would hope to have that finalized by November, as I shared with the board, it'll have a significant price tag. Local bonds and statewide bonds complement each other very, very well. So in order to meet the needs that we have before us, I believe I will be making a recommendation to the board alongside of Mr. Hoffman, that we need another bond measure and that will probably be 2016.
So you're saying that we worked in concert with developers to relieve, relieve this issue that we might have, this financial?
We already are on a statewide coalition level, but I definitely am having that conversations at the local level as well and, and they have to be partners in that moving forward.
I think it's important that we, your master plan, if you pump that November a little bit closer now, I mean, you must have a summary of?
Oh yeah. We're gonna bring that to the board. I believe the date was March or April. Yeah, absolutely.
And is that also shared with the developers and is it possible, the people who are gonna be running this bond act or?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Fortina?
Yeah, one quick question, Rich. With respect to the, to the task force on special ed, are you familiar with, with any of the recommendations they're making with respect to change in funding policy?
No, I would be surprised if they did. I, I looked to Mark and say, no, we haven't heard anything. It's, it, it was kind of those ones when it came out, no one really said, hey, this is like, it's not like the, the group that, you know, made the changes for LCFF where there's a lot of interest and a lot of things being done. It's been very, very quiet and I haven't heard anything out of it, but I think it's been a year and a half or two years now that they've been doing this.
Carmen, I can speak to her a second. Dr. Vicky Barber, who was the longtime superintendent for the county office in Elrodok County, she's actually one of the leads on this particular committee and I haven't been in contact with her in the last couple of months, but she gets it. She fully understands where we are in relation to funding and the lack of funding with regards to special ed. So I actually have pretty high hopes for the work that she's, everything she's touched that I've ever been associated with, she's done, done a fine job. Now, in the end, it's gonna be a recommendation and someone's gonna have to take some action and have enough power to be able to pull that off, but I actually have expectations that the, the committee work will be worthwhile.
Thank you.
Ms. Albion, any Mr. Madison, either of you have questions or comments?
I don't, I don't have any questions, I just want to echo Mr. Hoffman. Vicky Barber is a very strong advocate for us. I had the opportunity to sit in on committees with her with the special education, so we'll see how that's gonna come out. My only concern, and I see it really a concern when we talk about our dollars, where Mr. Fagan, you got up and said some fairly good news, some of the funding we got coming, but on the other hand, Mr. Pierce, it's a, it's a negative. And what really is concerning for this district, I believe, is that we're moving forward soon or we are gonna go into a growth path where we gotta open schools. And as one board member being on this board, when we had, we couldn't put schools up fast enough, there was so much pressure. So it is a real concern and I don't know how now with the state's mentality on how we're gonna fund these schools, it's gonna be challenging for us. The only other question I had with, as a result to adult education, you mentioned collaboration with the community college. Well, eventually, are they going to take that over? I know we talked about it.
I think Chris has said on that panel.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a little bit of the debate going on right now. That was the governor's original intent. I don't want to speak for the community colleges, but I think I can say pretty candidly that they're not chomping at the bit to do adult ed. So they are interested in, in working in collaboration with K-12 districts, you know, that are already doing programs. So I think this money, moving forward, it'll, it'll be, it'll be different than it was. And I think community colleges will have a role, but I don't think they're lining up to take over all the duties associated with adult ed.
Right, that's what I'm thinking too. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Albionni?
Thank you for a great presentation. Definitely highs and lows. I had a question on the Career Technical Education page. It's 18. And it says that they're going to this incentive grant program, and they're dropping off the Career Pathways Trust Grant. Are we, we are participants in the Career Pathway Trust Program, correct?
Yes.
And so, we're seeing this would help continue the Career Pathways Trust Grant. Is that in jeopardy of the work we're doing there?
I think it's in lieu of, and so, it'd be something different, but I think that that's why they're giving preference to districts that are already running programs. So, we would expect to maintain those.
And then, as you look at your numbers, the reserve grows substantially, and we've, we as a board will have to take a decision on that. The 2 percent that's being put upon us, at the same time they're telling us local control funding, is obviously very contradictory. And I would be interested in receiving information at some point, where our reserves were before we hit the last huge recession, because we were able to save quite a few of our programs for a long period of time, based on the fact we had good reserves? And if there is a historic, I don't know if there's a historical percentage we keep, and what it got up to prior to that dip. Those are kind of important things.
The board's never had a policy.
Okay.
And they have that ability to establish a policy of reserves, obviously above the minimum. Generally speaking, it's, in the time that I've been working at this level, or the previous, my previous level, it's been more of, you know, because we weren't looking at such significant times, it was more of, it was a lot less than what we would think about now, simply because we've been through that difficult period. So, there was no established reserves. We can certainly go back to seven, eight, and start bringing, and provide you with like multi-year projections, or the board with those, to bring them, just to kind of see how we built up, and now how we started to spend down those reserves. And what it does, as I've talked about several times, is that what it does is it means that as soon as we get out of bad times into good times, we don't have immediately to balance the budget. We can deficit spend like we did last year, like we're doing this year, but we have to eliminate that going forward, because at some point, the reserves will go away. So, I can get that information for you, I'll get it for the whole board.
I just, I have a lot of respect for what we're able to keep with class size reduction and things we were due to our reserves, so I'd like to know where they were.
There's one thing not on our priority list, that's on most other, almost every other district in the state, and that's reducing your TK3 class sizes proportionally, so you'll be at 24 to 1. We're already there. They're spending priority money now to get them down, so it's not available to them, so.
Yeah, there's definite advantages. Thank you.
Exactly.
Great. Excellent comments and questions. Some general comments, you know, sort of my day job, I'm an association executive representing the hotel industry, and like to be proactive when it comes to, on the legislative front. So, I think one area that we really need to improve on is our relationship with CSBA, and really demand of them to be more proactive as it relates to facilities. In their own recap and press release, they're silent on this issue, so that's very concerning to me. I am a delegate Assembly member, so it is something that I plan to bring up in my own respective meeting, but I think that that is something that we, as a school district, need to demand of our own advocates at the state Capitol. We spend a lot of dollars, and so, we need to get some service in return as it relates to some pending issues with facilities. And I would love to see sort of an advocacy day with at least three of the board members, we did this in years past, where we do meet with our legislators and discuss various issues. So, I'd like to see that take place as well.
And I'll, what I can do is work with Mr. Hoffman. So, just so the boards are aware, again, Coalition for Adequate School Housing and the California Building Industry Association are the two groups that have come together to form Californians for Quality Schools. That is the group that's filed with the Attorney General for the ballot initiative. So, once, I'm a member of that board, so we would love to have that opportunity, and with Mr. Hoffman involved, we can certainly get you in front of some key members of the legislature. It's different, though, because it's a ballot measure by initiative.
Right.
Signature gathering. So, what I didn't say, and I should have, in our polling, it passes with a 68 percent approval rating right now, and that's without any education to the voting base. Joan Buchanan knew that. So, you know, it'd be wonderful to see it go by the way of the governor signing a bill that puts it on the ballot, as opposed to us having to gather 350,000 signatures, which we know will do, but I would, I would love to take you up on that.
And that's where advocacy is very important, as a school district, for us to be on the forefront, since the Capitol is but miles away.
And so, I didn't want you to think we were being remiss in our duties to you. We're doing that for you as we speak, but we would love to have that opportunity with you as well.
Great. Thank you for a great report.
Ms. Singh Allen?
Yes.
Would, in terms of the advocacy, would this not be an appropriate topic for a resolution?
That would be great.
Absolutely.
You would like that? A resolution regarding?
Advocacy, yes, and I will work with our superintendent on that.
For facilities.
Absolutely. And I know that I can tell you, it's a sort of a silent issue. We have brought this up at the last delegate assembly, and really demanding more service from CSBA on this issue. So, the more active and vocal we are as a district in demanding those services of CSBA and our own advocates that represent our district as well. So, we need to be very aggressive on that. Yes, Ms. Albionni?
I'd also like to consider a resolution against the 2 percent reserve cap.
All right, so we will bring those up separately, and I'll work with our superintendent on that.
Yes.
Yes.
I know they are, but I don't, it's my understanding, we have not done one as a board, and I think that's a statement we should make.
No, we have not, and but I agree with you, and those are, we have a number of resolutions that I would like to see us discuss as well, outside of just this issue. But that goes to the importance of what we have as a board. If we are silent on the issue, then we defer to those who are speaking for us. And I'd rather, I'd rather us speak on our behalf. We may not get the outcome that we desire, but at least we've spoken up for our children. Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
No, this is not an action item.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we are going to go a little out of order, and we are going to go on to item number 10, Day of Remembrance Resolution. Mr. Bob Rowe presenting.
Good evening, Board President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. I am here this evening to ask that you have reaffirmed January 20th, 2015, as an annual Day of Remembrance in Elk Grove Unified School District, a resolution the board first adopted in 1983. First, a little historical perspective for our new board members, and for our students in the audience who may not know all this. In 1941, the United States entered World War II after Japan's attack on Pearl Harbor, Hawaii. Key United States leaders at that time claimed that all people of Japanese ancestry living on the West Coast posed a risk to our national security. Justifying it as a military necessity, the U.S. government forced more than 110,000 Japanese U.S. citizens and their immigrant elders to leave their houses and live in one of 26 relocation camps situated in remote areas of the United States. After Japan surrendered in August 1945, marking the end of World War II, the United States began to close the internment camps between October 45 and March 1946. Restructuring their lives after World War II was difficult for many Japanese Americans. Most lost their homes, farms, businesses, and properties. Their education was disrupted, and acts of discrimination and violence were commonplace. On August 10th, 1988, Ronald, President Ronald Reagan recognized a grave injustice had been done, and he signed H.R. 422 into law, authorizing payment, and an apology letter to each surviving internee. So, now Elk Grove, and since 1983, our Elk Grove Unified School District fifth grade students have been visiting the Time of Remembrance exhibit, which was first housed here in our boardroom, and then eventually moved to the California Museum, which will be there this year from January 26 to March 20, 2015. Students will learn about the Japanese internment and about the rights denied to U.S. citizens during World War II. Our very own retired administrator, Marielle Sukamoto, the Floran Japanese American Citizen League, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars will provide a unique living history experience to our students. So, before I ask you to adopt this resolution, I would invite Marielle Sukamoto up to introduce her guests that are with us tonight. Marielle, we are happy to have you here.
Thank you very much, Bob. Thank you very much for that very concise and accurate depiction of our history. You know, I want to introduce, it takes a lot of people to run this program. We have over 20 volunteers that come as docents, and unfortunately, there aren't any veterans left. I was five, you know, and I'm 77 now. All of us are in our 70s, but during the time that we can speak and we can come, we feel that it's an obligation to bring forth the story, not because it's our story, not because it's a sad part of history, because it's a story of American citizens who lost their constitutional rights, in part because we didn't know how to speak out, and no one was there to speak out for us. Our world is changing. Our country is changing. The one thing that Americans have is the U.S. Constitution with guaranteed rights. People are fighting for just those rights, but we have it. There is no guarantee that it will be retained. Our only hope is to do what you do here, to guarantee the education of the future generations. Our small part in this larger picture that you're responsible for is not only to tell our story, but in the context that the United States Constitution and the rights it guarantees is very important, and everybody has to believe it, everybody has to internalize that. You know, you look back at history, every one of you, somebody in your family, you know what? There was prejudice against you. We've all had that. And in order to preserve the United States Constitution for future generations, our hope is to educate the current generation. And so, it is our privilege, not just our responsibility, but our privilege to tell our story, to tell these children that come to see us. If you want to preserve your rights, you have to be able to speak out. You have to be able to stand up for what you truly believe is the right thing to do. And sometimes, we even stretch it a little bit to talk about bullying, because you know what? We have to stand up for our rights in that case, too, and that's becoming more and more of an issue. So, I want to take this time to introduce some very important people. Christine Umeda is the chairman of the Northern California Time of Remembrance. It started out just with one little chapter, Floran JACL, that my mother, Mary Sukamoto, was very active in. And her husband, Stan Umeda, represents Floran JACL. And we have a new young member of the California Museum staff, Alexandra Latona, who is the manager for the Education and Volunteer Program. And I hope that some of you, if you have the time, between the 26th of January and the 20th of March, there will be a school from Elk Grove, coming well-prepared. We always know that if there's a school from Elk Grove, those students will have the information, they'll know, they are enthusiastic, they come well-prepared, because every teacher that sends their class to our program is well-prepared. We have something called the Day of Remembrance, and I know that Mr. Fortina came, when we had a 100-year-old veteran. And just for your information, Mr. Matsumoto did pass away at, I think, just shy of his 102nd birthday.
Wow.
He lived a good, long life. We have a program coming up on February 14th. I'm going to give this to President Bobby Singh Allen, and there are two complimentary tickets that we have, a different program, won't talk about it, but thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you on a very busy night.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
And just so you know, last year, 2,647 of our fifth graders attended the Day of Remembrance, or Time of Remembrance over at the California Museum, which is about half, roughly half of our fifth grade population. At this time, I would ask that you adopt the resolution reaffirming that January 20th, 2015, as an annual Day of Remembrance in the Elk Grove Unified School District, in honor of our Japanese-American and Alusian families who endured the denial of their civil rights.
Okay.
I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll move it.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you so much for all that you do, educating our students. As a parent, I can tell you that my children remember that, the visit to the California Museum, and the lessons that they learned. Both of my sons had to pack a pillow with something meaningful for them, because that is all that families were able to take with them as part of their belongings. That still resonates with them today. It was a very powerful lesson, and thank you for all that you do in reminding us of the importance, and of not only the Constitution, but how easily it can also be taken for granted and taken away. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going back to the agenda, and let's see, we are on public comment. Seeing no blue cards here for public comment. Moving on to bargaining units, asking any bargaining units who wish to address the board? Hearing none? Okay, thank you. We do not have any reports, excuse me, or public hearings, so our next item is item 6A, finalizing the plans for the January 26, 2015, special board meeting for the purpose of interviewing and making a provisional appointment of a board member from trustee Area 6. I do have one blue card for Mr. Andres Ramos. Would you like to wait for after the presentation? Okay, very good. And Mr. Kruger, you are presenting. Dr. Kruger?
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Heine. I'm here just to provide any kind of support and guidance for the process that I have, Mr. Hoffman and I have worked with President Singh Allen on, in order to conduct the interviews for the board member appointee on the 26th of January.
So, for the benefit of the public, Dr. Kruger, would you mind just giving a quick synopsis, for those who may not know or don't have a copy of this, if you can just give a short overview?
Yes, I'm gonna, yeah. So, what I have for you is a copy of the, the board communication that went on on Friday. So, just in case you didn't have a copy handy, you each have a copy of that. What I have is, I'm first going to go over the process as it looks at this point, so you have an idea of the evening as it set out. And so, based on our conversation, President Singh Allen, you had proposed a 3 o'clock start time, so I do have on there a 3 o'clock start time, so the board can review the process, and that you, President Singh Allen, can review the process with the audience in public session. At 3:20, the candidates will be present, and they will be, they will have given, been given an appointment time in advance. So, they will show up, and they will be recommended to show up about 15 minutes in advance, and they will wait in the café until their scheduled appointment, and then they will be brought in by a human resources representative, so that they can come in, they can give a brief intro, or they can introduce themselves briefly. You can go over the process with them, although they will have received a handout of the process that you decide upon finalizing this evening. And then, they will be given 15 minutes to have you conduct the interviews with them. Also in this packet is a candidate process and protocol information sheet. That is the sheet that the candidates will receive. I'm going to skip to that, see if I can, I don't know if I can move this up. Hold on.
There we go.
So, as far as the candidate protocol? So as far as the candidate protocols, I'm just going to read through them very quickly if you would like me to do that. So each, as I said, each candidate will be assigned an interview time in advance. And they'll come here and wait in the café to be escorted into the boardroom for their scheduled time. When they're brought in, as we discussed, you will let them know that they have 15 minutes. Again, the recommendation is that they get to say a brief statement introducing themselves to the board and then you can conduct the interview. There will be five questions that you had, you're in the process of designing. I also have a question sheet for each board member, for each candidate, so that you can take notes accordingly as you're hearing each candidate speak to the questions that you're asking. Upon completion of the interview, each candidate will be escorted back to the café so that they can wait for the final results. In the past, we've had maybe one or two who have not chosen to wait, but that is up to them. As far as public comment goes, the proposal, President Singh Allen, that you were talking about was that we have public comment for three speakers per candidate at one minute per speaker. And that those comments would be covering information that they heard from the questions and the responses to your questions. The next part would, bargaining units would have time to come up, two minutes per bargaining unit with any comments based on what they have heard from the responses to the questions. And then there would be additional time for public comments. And using the guidelines you had originally talked about, it was 30 seconds per comment and that would allow us 28 additional comments, meaning that the public comment section has been designated for an hour. At that time, deliberation process will be conducted and which will lead to the selection or the recommendation of a final candidate. I can go over the other sheets, but I just wanted to go over the candidate information sheet first.
Yeah, no, I think that that's great. We'll save questions for after Dr. Kruger's presentation.
So it's difficult to read on this screen, but if you have in front of you. This is really the protocols for the board. These are the recommendations based on our conversation for your process. Again, candidates will be asked to show up 15 minutes in advance. They'll be brought into the boardroom. I'll go right down to the fourth box on the first page of this particular sheet. Each candidate will be asked the same set of questions, five questions in 15 minutes. And in order to maintain consistency of the process, follow-up and/or clarification questions cannot be asked, but you can always repeat the questions if the candidate needs them repeated. Each candidate will be stopped at their time limit, thanked, and asked to return to the café. And while questions are asked, notes will be taken, as I said before, on the candidate selection interview form, which I'll go over in just a moment. Onto the next page, second box. When all candidates have been interviewed, public comments will be heard based on the feedback, and I went over that already. The next box with consideration to the candidates' responses and public comments. Each board member will have a ranking sheet that they will have been using throughout the process. These are your own documents. They are not shared. They're your own documents for your own note-taking. And then President Singh Allen will facilitate a process to identify the top candidates so you can deliberate from there. Just for reference, board members, each of you will receive this candidate selection interview form with questions on it so that for each candidate, you'll have the opportunity to write your comments. You'll notice that at the end, or on the last page of this particular form, upon President Singh Allen's recommendation, there's a section here for strengths and weaknesses that can help you formalize or write down your comments Again, as I referenced, each of you will have a ranking sheet that you will, each time you see a candidate, you will be able to formulate your ranking. However, when you get to the public comment section and have other things to think about, other information to consider, you can work with this sheet accordingly. But this is a recording tool for you so that when President Singh Allen facilitates the final conversation, Finally, this is a worksheet or a recommended worksheet that President Singh Allen can use to gather board member comments and facilitate the conversation about your top candidates, including the strengths and weaknesses that you've identified in up to three candidates. So at this point, I will turn it over to you. And if you have questions or recommendations for me to work on form adjustments or revisions.
So I just wanted to have some clarifications since they weren't necessarily outlined here. I am not asking any questions for the, so that public understands. I am not asking any questions. The five colleagues will be asking the questions and I will be facilitating. Each board member was tasked with submitting one to two questions to the superintendent only. And those questions will be revealed the evening of the, or the late afternoon of the special meeting. So none of us will have prior knowledge of what those questions are, although we all know the one or two questions we submitted. But those, again, went directly to the superintendent only. So again, the hope and desire was to create a very fair process for all of our candidates. And I think something that's very important to reemphasize is that there will not be follow-up questions. All we can do is read the question. I think that that part, I will obviously remind the board as well during our special meeting as well. But that is something very important, is that we only have an opportunity to ask our questions and we can repeat the question. But anything beyond that, we are not going to be entertaining. So I will turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments of Dr. Kruger. Anyone here? Any questions, comments? We're good? So as you recall, we did, yes, go ahead.
Board of Education interview, January 26th, paper, 2015, 3:00. Public comment. After all candidates have been interviewed, the board will call for the following. Public comments. Three comments per candidate at one minute per speaker. Who's going to select those individuals in the audience to ask questions? Those, those public comments? And what's the process?
So that is a, that is a process piece that we can continue to work out as far as how that looks. Typically, though, the candidates will know that they are allowed up to three speakers for them, so they will know that in advance. So if they choose to have all three spots taken by people that want to support them or give comments on their responses, then President Singh Allen will have the blue cards for each candidate.
Right. The goal and the hope was that everybody has a fair access so that any one or two candidates didn't monopolize the entire hour, that this created fairness for all applicants to put forward up to three. But of course, more during the other general open public comment others can speak to.
So what you're saying is that each candidate can request up to three individuals, one minute, and their behalf to speak, and their behalf? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
That's what I understand, yes.
The ranking sheet, I might need some in-service training about that later on.
Yes.
And deliberation will commence. Now, where did I put that in?
That's, you know, estimated that we will start at 8:30.
Now, 8:30, is that open or closed?
Everything is open.
Everything's going to be open. No closed meeting.
No, 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 no closed meeting.
Great. Last thing. Has, what media has been notified about this special meeting, the 26th, as of today?
At this point, there have been three, three local media agencies that have received the information about the 26th.
And which are? Hold on, I want to get this.
Sacramento Bee, Elk Grove Citizen, and the Elk Grove News.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I do have a blue card, so I'd like to call up Andres Ramos. So there's, this is not an action item. This is just sort of an update from our last where we did approve our timeline. So just as a point of clarification.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, board members, superintendent, Ms. Hein. Andres Ramos, I think you all know me. Community member, recently reappointed finance committee member. Thank you. So I'm glad to see the process today. This is the first time I'm hearing of it. So I'll just provide a few comments on what I've heard. So I guess, and it looks great to make sure that there's robust and great deliberations since you'll be appointing the Area 6 person. Though I do wonder, just on a few things. So five questions, and you said that you wouldn't be asking a question, though I kind of don't see why not. There's only going to be five questions asked. And it seems like there should be more dialogue in terms of vetting someone who's going to represent a seventh of Elk Grove Unified. So I think the more questions, the better. And you've served now for the past over two years. So I think you have the experience to know what should be asked of a board member, so.
It wasn't so much that, other than time. The time factor was really what was factored in. And then facilitating is going to be essentially more than a full-time task. So I, and we do have cover letters that were submitted. We do have a lot of information. You know, is six enough or is 10 enough? So I mean, there really isn't the best number.
Well, and so then in terms of the public comment, and I understand the three speakers per candidate, though I do, I am a little concerned hearing about limiting the topic of the comments to issues that are raised in the interviews. I think that's going down in probably a bad path. And in fact, I might be a little, I'm just a little nervous in terms of Brown Act and just even in terms of First Amendment, in terms of what people can say. And looking at what's happening in Twin Rivers with Brown Act allegations in terms of the appointment there, probably want to stay away from any restrictions in terms of content, I would suggest. But other than that, everything else seems, I'm glad to see that the public comment is happening after the interviews so that there's kind of, people can see how the candidates perform to give their perspective. But overall, what I wanted to comment on before seeing this was that, and I know that we're kind of late in the process and so there wasn't an opportunity for a public, a community forum. And you only have a 60-day window, as I understand, to conduct the appointment. And I really appreciate that the board has done all it can to ensure that there's as robust a discussion in making this appointment as possible. Though I hope the board would take this as an opportunity for the future, perhaps in terms of processes or procedures, to establish something where you kind of start a little earlier in the process, allow for a community forum, perhaps hosted by the League of Women Voters, as happens in the election. I think just about all of you have been at those sort of forums when you ran for the board. And certainly more than six questions, or more than five questions were asked of you. And really, members of the public got to ask those questions, not just other board members. So I think that would allow for a broader dialogue in terms of the issues because there's more than just five issues that come before you as we can all see just at any board meeting. So I think just as a point for the future, perhaps a process could be established in terms of getting the appointment process started a little earlier, allow for a community forum where members of the public could ask questions. I think.
If I may, we had an individual. When people are in politics and we don't know when they're going to win or lose or when they run, it makes it difficult for this board to respond to the short timetable that we do have. I just want to bring that up. It's not as simplistic sometime as you think it is.
I understand. And particularly in this circumstance, given that when this vacancy occurred, you had the holidays right smack in the middle of it. It would, it made it very unrealistic. But I'm just saying for future, in the future, should it ever happen again, and it may very well happen as it has three times in the past, I think, three years, I would hope that perhaps, just an idea. I would love to go to such a forum. I went to the school election forums and asked a few questions myself and it really provided a lot of great feedback just to make sure that the public is participating in whatever way possible because the public isn't getting to vote on this person, but you are. And so to whatever degree, we can expand the dialogue between the public and the board members. That's something I really think would be great. So I just wanted to suggest that.
I think you have excellent points and those are all that we have actually considered and addressed at the last board meeting. If there was even an opportunity to do a forum, we did raise it, but that's not something we can control as a board. All we can control is our calendar. So we did put it out there, if there was community interest, particularly by way of the Elk Grove Citizen. But I think just the amount of candidates and in terms of trying to schedule something like that, I can't, I won't speak to the citizen. But that's not something that we can control. So the opportunity did exist for a third party to do that within our timeframe. But I do share your concerns and I think that we've done a very good job being as proactive as we can with the timeframe that we did get presented to us. In the perfect world, we have school board members that serve their terms, too. So we don't have such issues. But, you know, it is something that we're very mindful of and that is something that I would like to see if we have some, you know, something a little bit more proactive for the future. But I think, given the tightness of everything, we've done a very deliberate job of including the public for comment because I think it's very important. We have excellent, excellent candidates and we all have an excellent opportunity, not only what's on paper, but when candidates are brought forward. And of course, the public can chime in because we want to hear from you. So, you know, but I appreciate what you're saying and I do share some of those concerns, too.
Absolutely. And I thank you for trying to be as inclusive as possible, given the time constraint, which I understand. But I'm just saying, going forward, hopefully, with, and I'm a process-oriented person, hopefully, something can be built to allow for that whenever it's possible, within the 60 days.
Very good.
Can you, I can't hear him.
Can you, yeah, would you, I don't know if everyone can hear that. There is a forum, you're saying, on Friday? Okay, got it. Wonderful. So for those that did not hear, Friday's edition of the Elk Grove Citizen will feature all 12 candidates where the citizen did ask three questions of every candidate and that will be published in Friday's paper. So that provides yet an additional layer of resources and information for not only the public, but for the board to consider as well. Thank you to the citizen for doing that. Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda, we have, we're on item number seven, 2015-16 Open Enrollment Recommendations. We have Ms. Tina Penna and Mr. Bob Rowe.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Hein. Mr. Pierce, Mr. Rowe and I tonight are here to ask the board to receive and provide feedback on a proposal regarding open enrollment for the 2015-2016 school year. At the conclusion of our presentation, we will ask the board to take action to approve the open enrollment process and timeline for 2015-16 and also to approve the automatic matric- matriculation of students on open enrollment in the 8th grade at Elizabeth Pinkerton Middle School to Kasumnas Oaks High School. We begin the presentation tonight with not only the legal foundation, but the legal mandate of why we offer open enrollment. Under our own board policy 5116.1, the board annually identifies the schools that are available for open enrollment, and that is our purpose tonight. Assembly Bill 1114 allows the board to limit open enrollment, however, to schools that have space available based on future student enrollment projections. That same Assembly Bill, 1114, also requires that parents who are district residents be able to select the school their child will attend, with the exception that the district maintains appropriate racial and ethnic balances among its schools, and we have done an analysis that has been previously reported to the board, that open enrollment does maintain those racial and ethnic balances. Also, the Assembly Bill requires that students who reside within a school's attendance boundaries not be displaced by students coming in on open enrollment in that attendance area. And then finally, any school receiving admission requests in excess of capacity must utilize a random, unbiased selection process for deciding among applicants, and that selection process is included in the process that we will propose to you tonight. Finally, Senate Bill 1207 requires that for the purpose of open enrollment, the governing board of a school district calculate the capacity of district schools in a non-arbitrary manner, using pupil enrollment and available space, and Mr. Pierce will be here tonight to talk to you about that process that is utilized in our district.
Thank you. Each year, pre-K 6, the pre-K 6 Division deals with movement amongst our elementary schools in the following ways. Program improvement, Title I schools that are in program improvement, those families are allowed the option of public school choice to attend another of our schools. We have a variety of reasons for intra-district transfers, that's transferring from one school to another within our district. In our district, it's mostly for daycare purposes, there are other ones that are, that may come up, like health and welfare of a student, or to finish the end of a school year. We do have offloading of students, and that might be a phrase that might be new to some of our board members, that's due to overcrowding. If we don't have room in a classroom at a particular site, we will offload or bus the child to a different school where there is room. And then the other legislative act is the Romero Open Enrollment Act, which again allows for certain schools that are at a certain API number, there, those families are allowed to attend another school. So, let's see if I did this correctly, sorry about that, there we go. So our recommendation this year is the same as it's been every year, that the, that no elementary schools be designated as open enrollment sites, because we feel that we address the needs of our families through those other means of enrollment.
Different picture in 7th through 12th grade. We will be bringing to the board a proposal tonight to open 14 schools, seven middle schools and seven high schools for open enrollment. The objectives of open enrollment for secondary schools is to enhance school choice for both parents and students, to provide more equitable access to our schools' fine academies and specialized programs, and also to balance enrollment upon, among our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Penna. Each year, myself and my staff work very closely with secondary education, as well as the principals at our 18 secondary schools. So one of the things that we explore each year is each school's projected enrollment as the population matriculates through the grade span. So really, what that means is, in the event that we were to offer open enrollment to a school, would a student who is successful in receiving open enrollment to that school be able to finish their education at the school? In other words, will the school fill up or not within its natural boundary prior to that student's graduation? We clearly would not want to do that. Again, capacity for increased enrollment over multiple years speaks to that as well, and in that, we apply any new future housing that might be in the attendance area. And based on that criteria, just from a demographics perspective, we have deemed seven middle schools and seven high schools meeting that criteria. In terms of middle schools, each year, we apply a capacity figure to the upcoming school year's enrollment projection, so in this case, 2015-2016. We don't apply any open enrollment assumptions from prior years, we strictly look at the population of that school as it stands today. Capacity, I will share with you, not that it's a subjective number, but capacity can change, given any number of factors, so the board members who were on the board this past summer may remember a workshop where we talked about capacity and how we determined it as a district. And so it's a tricky thing to gather, but it is non-arbitrary. We apply this, we apply, excuse me, the same exact underlying assumptions to each school, and we come up with these figures, and you can see that in the three schools that are identical to one another in terms of the facility, Albionni, Johnson, and Pinkerton, they all have the same exact capacity of 1,424 students, so you can see that played out there. In comparing the 2015-16 projections, you can see that we actually have excess capacity at all of our middle schools, except for Albionni and Toby Johnson. So those are the two of the nine middle schools that don't meet that aforementioned criteria. Terms of high schools, again, we apply a non-arbitrary capacity analysis of each of our schools, we do this each year, and then apply the upcoming year's enrollment projection. Again, in this case, the two feeder schools for Albionni and Toby Johnson, being Franklin and Pleasant Grove, are also full, in fact, they're impacted, and they do not have excess capacity. So those are two high schools that do not meet the aforementioned criteria.
Based on the enrollment projections and the school capacities, the following seven middle schools are being recommended to the board tonight for open enrollment for the 2015-16 school year. Those schools, as you can see, are Harriet Eddy, Edward Harris Jr., Samuel Jackman, Joseph Kerr, Elizabeth Pinkerton, James Rutter, and T.R. Smedberg. At the high school level, applying the same enrollment projection and school capacity formula, seven high schools, Kasumnas Oaks, Elk Grove, Florin, Laguna Creek, Monterey Trail, Sheldon, and Valley are being recommended to you tonight as open enrollment sites. You'll notice that there were four schools that we didn't mention, and those are the four schools that are at this point projected to be overcapacity. Those are Katherine Albionni, Toby Johnson, Franklin High School, and Pleasant Grove High School. And therefore, we're recommending that these four schools be exempted from the open enrollment process. They have been every year. The reasons are, first, that the residing population and the anticipated future growth at each school is projected to exceed enrollment capacity, again, what you saw. You need to also be aware that the enrollment of these schools are currently being monitored to assess the need for what we call redirection of students who are moving new into the school's boundaries. Now, you heard the word offloading before, which is when an elementary student does not have a place at his home school and therefore is offloaded. Redirection is the same thing, it's just what we call it at the secondary level. And so we are closely, closely monitoring the need to begin redirection, actually, this spring, especially for Albionni, Pleasant Grove, and Franklin, for all students who are moving new into the district. This does not displace any student who is already residing in the district and would be residing in the district as of the date that would be specified. So what we would do then is that we would redirect the students to a nearby school that has capacity to enroll them. This year, at the request of the board, we have included a survey as part of the application to determine the reasons that parents may be requesting open enrollment away from the home school. The survey questions added are shown there, a little bit hard to see, but we're asking parents to select up to three reasons from the list that we gave about why they're seeking to enroll their student in another school. And of course, we talk about course or program that's not offered at the current school, so in other words, a programmatic difference, a programmatic reason, like an academy, like international baccalaureate, the perception that there may be a more challenging instructional program at the requested school, the perception of a safety or security issue. Childcare is also one of the choices that we gave, proximity of employment to the requested school, the perception of a newer facility, because obviously, we have schools that are newer and schools that are older, and is that weighing into people's decisions? Perhaps it might be the student's peer group or friends that would be driving the decision, although it should not be, is it the athletic program? And certainly, at open enrollment meetings, which we'll talk about in a minute, Rod Edmiston, our district athletic director, is there to talk about CIF rules and CIF regulations regarding the transfer of students. Is school size an issue? Perhaps, students from a large school may seek a smaller school, is there something regarding the staff, or we've also talked about any other possibilities? So we hope that this will give us sort of a window into the world of what parents are thinking as they apply for open enrollment. Last year, we received 1,477 requests for open enrollment. 5% of our schools had incoming transfer request rates that exceeded 5%, and obviously, Pinkerton and Kasumnas Oaks, but also Edward Harris Jr. Middle School. There were six schools that had outgoing transfer request rates exceeding 5%, and those were Harriet Eddy, Samuel Jackman, Toby Johnson, James Rutter, Florin, and Valley. And as you know, we try to maintain the stability of those schools that are losing students, and therefore, we have in the past recommended, and will again recommend this year, that we limit the percentage of students that are transferring out of any particular school to 5%. In order, and then what I just said, we are, well, I just said that, so we're gonna skip that slide, so there we go. So we are gonna seek that approval, although that approval will be presented to you for action at the February 17th meeting, once we see which schools actually have exceeded the 5% transfer rate. Also, in completing the analysis of enrollment projections for 15-16 at Kasumnas Oaks, we are once again prepared to allow the 202 8th grade open enrollment students currently attending Elizabeth Pinkerton to attend Kasumnas Oaks without reapplying for open enrollment. Each year, we look at the data, and we make a recommendation based on this data analysis, we complete a new analysis each year. Clearly, we know that construction is, has begun, is in full force around Kasumnas Oaks and Pinkerton, and we know that there will come a time when we're not able to accommodate the number of open enrollment students that we have been accommodating. However, at this time, and Mr. Pierce may be able to give more information, the construction is not yielding the numbers of students that it would take for us not to offer this. And at Kasumnas Oaks, we obviously graduated out a very large class of 2014, we can well accommodate the 202, and there would still remain 180 slots for other students who are seeking open enrollment. So, part of what I would ask you to take action on tonight is to approve this process beginning January 21st. It is going to be a two-week process, it would close on February 6th. I will come back, and I will present to you data that reflects the actual open enrollment request information on February 17th, and that will help us in having you decide whether or not to impose the 5% transfer limit. And then also, I would ask on February 17th, once all of the data are presented, for you to approve those transfers and allow those students who have been selected to transfer to their schools of choice. The timeline, we're here tonight making the presentation, with the board's approval, we would open the process tomorrow. We do provide information to local newspapers, The Citizen and The Bee, we place information on the Elk Grove website and on School Loop, and we also make calls to families regarding autodiler about open enrollment. On January 28th, we would have the first of two parent information meetings regarding open enrollment, the first would be at Monterey Trail High School, the second meeting on February 2nd will be at Sheldon High School, and again, February 6th is our application deadline, it's a Friday at 5:00 p.m. Come back to the board February 17th with the actual data, ask you to take action. On February 23rd, should the board approve it, we will have a random selection process here to fore known as the lottery, but we've decided to call it what it's actually called in legislation. The random selection process would occur, if needed, at Kasumnas Oaks High School. And then the rest of this is when the schools receive their list of incoming students. The week of March 2nd, parents receive notification of acceptance or placement on a waiting list, and they're asked to submit open enrollment agreements to the requested schools. If we do not receive the agreement back from the parents, then we take that slot away, and we go to the people on the waiting list, and we offer the waiting list folks those opportunities. And on March 20th, any remaining spaces will be allocated out. One thing that I neglected to mention is that I will provide the board at midpoint with a progress report of the trends that we're seeing in terms of the numbers of requests to and from schools, and if we can give you an indication at that point of parent survey results, we will do that as well. So at this time, Mr. Rowe and Mr. Pierce and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Penna. I'll turn to my right here, colleagues, have any questions or comments?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Well, I think some of the legal foundations, and I understand it, set a balance amongst its schools, racial, ethnic makeup, I still, I still don't think it puts a true balance with academics with all the schools, particularly Valley and Florin. And it just doesn't address some of the really main issues that I have in making a real balanced district. We've got some schools that have tremendous capacity in them, and they have, and they're good schools, with good teachers. I don't know what the solution can be that we can balance out our schools a little bit better than what we're doing right now. We talk about facilities, what's gonna happen down the road when the state looks at schools such as a Valley and a Florin with 2,400 kid capacity, and we have half of that, or three-quarters of it. So that's a concern to me. I just think that we need to look at something outside of the box in balancing out our district a little bit better. It's gonna get to a point, Kasumnas Oaks is gonna reach capacity, there are over 2,000 kids there now, and those kids came from all over the district. And once that building takes place out there again, in the Franklin area going, I can see that school be another Franklin High School out there, and then what are we gonna do? Yeah, we'll stop having kids going there. So there's some underlying issues I think we have as a district to address, particularly in northern part of our district, so I'm gonna leave it at that, I know there's laws in there, but I'm not really satisfied with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Anyone, questions, comments? Mr. Fortina?
Ms. Penna, you and I have had a lot of conversation over the last two years on this subject, and I know that you are aware of the sensitivity and the emotionalism with respect to the entire issue. Irrespective of the fact that there's a law, that takes a lot of the prerogative out of our hands. I continue to struggle with so many of the inequities created as a result. In one of the slides, it says, in order to maintain viable and stable enrollments at each of our schools, we're again seeking the board's approval establishing no more than 5%. That's 5% this year, it was 5% last year, it was 5% the year before. And what that does is, on a yearly basis, decrease the number of students at a number of these schools, such as, this year, we've been asked to add FTE in order that more classes will be available to students, because by virtue of the low numbers, you can't provide classes. So on the one hand, we say, you know, in order to have a school that provides equity and choice of classes that students might take, we have to add FTE, but at the same token, we've created a problem by reducing the number of students at the school, so that, so that whole issue of equity is a problem. And there's equity with respect to transportation. Two of the biggest schools that get hit continually are Two of the biggest schools that get hit continually are Valley and Florin. There's a lot of parents that don't have choice because they just simply couldn't take their kids somewhere else if they wanted to. And again, that's another issue of equity for me. There's also an issue when we look at cognitive ability of kids that are leaving, and some of the brightest are going, and that has an overall negative impact to the school. I hope, I hope, beyond belief, I hope, that once you're in receipt of the reasons that you garner from the survey, that we can look at those, look at the outcomes we want, and put together a plan that'll address the reasons why people leave excellent schools. I mean, I've spent so much time talking to Teacher DeValley at Florin, even at Laguna, and we got great staff, we got great kids. There is a perception that newer is better. Newer school, you got a better principal, you got better teachers, you got better custodial staff, and there's nothing other than people's perception to back that up. It's a difficult, it's a difficult issue. I know that we have to offer it. I know the 5 percent's been recommended by our legal people. This becomes one of those things that I guess for a board member is really difficult because a no is making a statement. You deserve a yes because of all the work you've done. And it's, to me, is one of the worst things that we have, and I agree with Mr. Madison, it's one of the worst things we've had to deal with. Last year, we talked about the concerns. The year before, we talked about the concerns, and now we're back dealing with the same issue. And it's like our hands are tied behind our back because the law says you got to do it. I just am really, really hopeful that the survey is going to provide some direction for us so that as we address this next year, it's not going to be the same problem. Thank you for your work.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
I agree with Mr. Madison, Mr. Fortina. Last two years, I also voted for the plan, and this year, I'm not going to vote for it because I think, like Mr. Fortina said, we need to sit down and make a plan. And we have monies, we have LCFF monies, LCAP plan, we could put it in there to put in more API courses or the STEM classes, whatever it takes. We need to sit down and deal with this issue today, not next year and come back and vote for the same issue again. But we need to sit down, maybe establish a committee to deal with this issue heartily. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. My only comments are, I do echo some of the concerns raised by my colleagues, and I expressed those last year as well. And I think the, some of the issues are, some of the schools where we're losing, we need to figure out in a proactive manner of marketing those schools a little stronger and seeing what those weaknesses are and enhancing so that they're also schools of, you know, that are destination schools, if you will. But as a parent, so balancing some of those concerns, as a parent, I also appreciate the choice available to my student, my child. If my child is going into the engineering program and there is a school that can accommodate that, it is incumbent upon me to transport my child and make those accommodations. So as a parent, I like to balance that with what is also reasonable for the parents that are out there. So, you know, sort of a balanced approach, I think, is important so that we do look at the data. I think the survey will be very helpful to see why we are losing those students, and we can have some of our theories and conspiracy theories, if you will. But unless we really hear why, then we really don't know. And then looking at that data and seeing what we can do to make the schools where we are losing students a destination school. I think we've done a great job with Laguna Creek with the IB program, so looking at some sort of creative ideas of where we can look at schools like Valley and Florin and see what we can do to enhance. But again, also, as a parent, if there is a school available that, there's an opportunity for a career academy, that my student, my child has a great interest in pursuing that, I like that freedom to be able to take my child to that school if it's allowed under open enrollment. So I appreciate your presentation, and I do share a lot of the concerns, but I think there are things that we can do proactively, and the survey is definitely a first good step. So thank you.
At this point, I would like to call for a motion to approve the timeline for 2015-16 open enrollment process. I will make the motion. Is there a second?
I will second it.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Heine?
Aye.
Madison?
Aye with toughness. Aye.
Aye.
Fortina?
Aye.
Perez?
No.
Aye.
Fortina somewhere.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And then also, the Cassumnas Oaks, the Elizabeth Pinkerton matriculation to Cassumnas Oaks.
Yes.
Is that included in that?
Well, it's not in my notes, but we can make that. Let's do a separate motion for that.
What was?
For the second portion, could you repeat that?
Yes, to allow the 202 students who are enrolled on open enrollment at Elizabeth Pinkerton to automatically matriculate to Cassumnas Oaks without reapplication for open enrollment.
So a motion for that?
I'll move that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
And I would, discussion?
We have a discussion.
No.
This one.
Okay, sure.
I'm concerned about that issue, too. What you're doing is like, for instance, if I have an eighth grade child that's going to go to that school, and I have two or four other children in my household, and I'm living in that area, I'd be darned upset if my kids don't automatically go to that school or be shipped out someplace else. So I wonder how we deal with that type of issue.
Actually, what, one of the conditions of the law is that you cannot displace any student who resides within the boundary area.
Right.
The issue with Cassumnas Oaks and Pinkerton is the boundary area has not developed to an extent to fully enroll the schools, and that's been the case since they opened back in 2008. I don't know, Mr. Pierce, do you want to give any other information?
So as we shared, Mr. Perez, that's part of the analysis, and we work hand in hand with all the home builders that are currently building.
Right.
So we know their pace of development. We are very confident that should that be allowed, the school will be able to accommodate any future kids as well as those students.
So can we make a friendly amendment to that issue, that if a family is in that situation, that they will also automatically go to that school?
I don't.
So they do, by definition, now, just by virtue of the boundary?
They do, they will. Okay, is that known in the community?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right, so we had a motion and a second, so we'll do our roll call.
Aye.
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 Fortina.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I had just one quick question. I think, follow, I think Mr. Fortina might have brought it up last year, maybe this year, too. On the survey, particularly Jackman and Kerr, do we get a good full survey of the ones that want to leave that boundary, that area? That we actually interview these parents or find out why or what's really going on?
We did not do a survey last year. It's been a number of years since we did a survey, and we did not get a great response. This year, we recrafted it, we actually included it as part of the application so that we believe that we're going to come closer to getting, if we have 1,477 applications, 1,477 surveys, to help us to understand why people are leaving. I think that, as I say every year, I think a lot of the reasons that people choose to leave schools is because they believe there's a perception that there is something better at another school, whereas it was stated tonight that we have quality programs at all of our schools. One of the things, too, I know you were talking about, Mr. Madison, one of the perceptions, I think, at Valley High School, for example, is on the numbers of classes that kids can take.
Right.
And I'm pleased to report that they will be on a block schedule next year. And so I think that that likely will assist in maintaining some of their enrollment because there will be many more course options available for students than there previously have been.
Well, let's hope so. And I just, I know it's worked sometime, but sometime with our staff at the local level there, we can really get with those parents and maybe curb that perception. Why is this happening? Why don't you think Valley, or in the case of Florin from Rutter, that they can't offer a rigorous program and a good education for your child? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want?
I think there is also an opportunity for our new communications person to take it upon themselves to publicize the assets at those schools more widely.
You know, something, just since we're chiming in on possible marketing, something that I brought up last year was working with the students, being the best advocates of the school, and using that sort of maybe a video, a PSA, and using that as a tool for back-to-school nights, but it's really coming from the students, peer-to-peer. You know, it's something that you can explore as well, so. Lot of ideas, and definitely, I think, there's consensus here from everyone that we want to be proactive with some of the schools where we are losing enrollment. So, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have item number eight, African American History Month resolution. I'd like to call on Anna Tranel, or no, we've got Mr. Saruti. My notes say Anna.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Heine. The month of February has been designated African American History Month by the California Department of Education. This observance permits the society at large and schools in particular to celebrate the achievements of African Americans and also to reexamine society's role in preserving the civil rights of all of its citizens. In our schools, we study the contributions and the literature about and authored by our African Americans as part of the curriculum throughout the year. The designation in February adds a special emphasis. And with that, I respectfully ask the board to approve the resolution designated February 2015 as African American History Month.
Thank you, Mr. Saruti. I'd like to call for a motion to adopt resolution number 34 designating February 2015 as African American History Month.
I move.
I have a motion, is there a second? Mr. Perez? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saruti. All right, next, we have Career Technical Education Month Resolution. Ms. Hamilton will be presenting.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, board members, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Heine. The Board of Education also is asked to approve a resolution designating February 2015 as Career Technical Education Month. The observance allows us to celebrate the contribution of career technical education as a vehicle to provide our students with high-quality school-to-college and career experiences, as well as applied academically rigorous curriculum to prepare them for college and career success. So I'm here tonight to ask that you approve this resolution to designate February 2015 as Career Technical Education Month.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. I'd like to call for a motion to adopt resolution number 35.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. All right, we have already done item number 10, so it brings us to board member and superintendent reports. For those of our new school board members, we sort of have a gentleman's agreement that we will do reports, basically reporting on various subcommittees that we participate in. When we visit our schools and assemblies, those go as part of our regular board duty, so we don't report on those. We just report on something unique, but specifically a board committee that you may be a representative of. So with that, does anybody have a board member report? Mr. Fortina?
Yes. Today, Dr. Martinez, Larry, and I attended the first LCAP committee chaired by Mr. Saruti, and it was number one, well-planned, two, well-attended, and as we have an opportunity to look at inclusion in that group, it'll probably be even attended by more than today. The LCAP, as we all know, is the basis of our work. It says what we're going to do, it says how we're going to do it, and it gives direction in terms of the resources should be allocated. So it was great that Mr. Saruti brought it forward, and it's going to be great to serve on that committee.
Thank you for that report. Any other colleagues have a report?
I'd just like, I'd like to add just a comment. It was very informative, and the hope is that the committee will continue on with the same constituents and hopefully growing from there to get more community input and engagement. So that was really nice to see, the breakdown of the LCAP and really thoroughly reported of exactly where we'll be looking to plan in the upcoming years and looking at the E4 that arises, kind of giving the summary of our school board and our objectives. And so I think for us, for myself, it was very informative, and I enjoyed attending that meeting, looking forward to attending the future meetings as well.
Great, thank you for that. Yes, and then I have just one report. I will be attending the CSBA Board President Workshop this Saturday, and I will provide my comments and feedback at the next board meeting, so I yield to my superintendent now.
Okay, and I just had a couple of quick updates. Had the opportunity yesterday at Jackman Middle School and also Prairie Elementary. Kaiser Permanente, one of our ongoing partners, as well as Hands in Sacramento, conducted a work day at the site. There were 90-plus people that were there, as well as representatives from the Assembly, from SAC City was there, and so it was just a great opportunity to kind of honor the work of Dr. King in a day of actually giving back. And so kids, staff were there, Ms. Pennam and Ms. Cherry were able to join us as well, so it was just a great opportunity. And then the previous Saturday, had an opportunity to make two visits. One was to Cassumnas Oaks High School, where the curriculum department was putting on a training for our math teachers with regards to Math Generations and getting our teachers ready for the Common Core, and I was able to sit in on four of the sessions, and it was our people that were doing the presentations, and it was just further evidence of the quality of the staff that we had doing the work and folks giving up their time on a Saturday to be engaged. So that was, that was great. A little later in the day, I made it over to Barbara Comstock Morse, and actually Crocker Art Museum had the trailer that was there with the museum display, and a number of families showed up, and just about as we showed up, the sun came right through the clouds, and it was a beautiful day, and it was great to see kids interacting in the museum setting, so I'm very appreciative of the invitation and the opportunity. Thank you.
Very good, very busy superintendent, thank you.
I have a request or a statement. This monthly student support for health services that we all received in our packages, excellent. I really like this. I'd like you to continue putting this out. One thing that I'm concerned about is the spread of measles within California. As you know, it made the papers just recently, but we are not in the headlines yet, but I would like our health section to be proactive and check out, see how many of our kids are immunized, and make sure that our community knows the process, where to go, and the legal realities of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. In the future, for those items, please bring those up at the, towards the end of the agenda, since this is just for our reports. Next on the agenda, we have our consent agenda, and Mr. Fortina will go over those. You want them?
Thank you, Ms. Singh Allen. I move the consent agenda, which includes item number 11, approval of minutes, item 12, personnel actions, item 13, approval of purchase order history, item 14, warrant history approval, item 15, contract ratification, item 16, acceptance of gifts, item 17, revision to board policy, 1312.3 uniform complaint process, and the EGUSD graduate profile.
All right, and we have a motion for Mr. Fortina to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second with Mr. Madison. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Discussion and action on items removed from consent agenda, since there were none. Other items from the floor? Hearing none. Items for future agendas. I have one, and that is to review CSBA resolutions, so I will work with Superintendent Hoffman on those. on those.
And just to comment on that, I did work with Cabinet last Wednesday, and we have the list of items that the board has requested. And also did a whole layout of the spring, so we'll have, we'll have some details for you moving forward, but I want to let you know that we'd heard the requests, and we're fitting those into the spring calendars.
Very good. Thank you for that update, Superintendent. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. 8:30 is the first. It's adjourned.
We got to vote on that.
You don't have to vote on the adjournment.
We do. Make, make a motion, don't we?
Well, we haven't. Thank you.